Just want to just dawn the runner again.
Oh, she's coming.
So we, we did have a request.
The.
The agenda, so unless I add something to the agenda, you know, she won't be able to speak because the item is not on there.
Just one.
Or your information. I want to hold one side.
Good evening, I'd like to call the general committee meeting to order, would everyone please rise with a prayer and pledge allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interests of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Amen.
Ms. Lamoyne, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Votche.
Mr. Campbell, Ms. Harris, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Lee Bowman, Mr. Long, Ms. Lamoyne, Ms. Dyser, Ms. Rodney, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Warner, and Ms. White.
So we, we did have a request.
The agenda, so unless I add something to the agenda, you know, she won't be able to speak because the item is not on there.
Just one.
Or your information. I want to tell it one sided. Anybody else want to see it?
Want to see it?
Okay.
All right, let's go.
I think they will.
Good evening, I'd like to call the general committee meeting to order, would everyone please rise with a prayer and pledge allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interests of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Amen.
Ms. Lamoyne, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Votche.
Mr. Campbell, Ms. Harris, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Lee Bowman, Mr. Long, Ms. Lamoyne, Ms. Dyser, Ms. Rodney, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Warner, and Ms. White.
Thank you, Ms. Votche, before we go on to the agenda items before us tonight, I would like to at this time take a moment of silence for one of our teachers who's passed. A moment of silence, please, for Celeste Dresens and Adika Scott felt sympathy and condolences go out to Ms. Dresens' family. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Okay, and I condolences also go out to the staff and faculty at Mira Elementary also. It's been a difficult thing for them too. Okay, next item is an education item, Ms. Warner.
Thank you, Mrs. Dyser. Item 2.1, Head Start Continuation Application and Update. Ms. Skilinger, how are you today?
Good, how are you?
Good, doing good. Good to see you.
You too, thanks. Good evening, thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to come before you this evening. I'm here to present and seek your approval for our Head Start Continuation Application for the 2023-24 school year, as well as our COLA and Quality Improvement Supplement as well. And then again, I'll meet with Policy Council next Thursday to review this information with them and seek their approval also. In front of you, you have a set of handouts that includes the application and all the information that is needed to be inputted into the enterprise system for Head Start. We will again devote most of our funding to keep our universal preschool program for the four-year-olds for the 2023-24 school year. Just as a reminder, in addition to Head Start funds, we also use LA4, 8G, Title I, and the Education Excellence Fund to help support our program and make it possible for all of our four-year-olds living in the parish to come to school for free. We have 23 preschool classrooms that are spread out across all seven of our elementary campuses. Five, sorry, seven of those classrooms are dedicated strictly to Head Start, and those are on five of the campuses, with Davies and Lacoste not housing any Head Start classrooms. The other 16 classrooms are a mix of the funding that I just mentioned, and those are spread out across all of the elementary campuses. If you look at the application, you'll notice that we are funded for 112 students, which is the same as that we currently funded for this year and the last few years that we've had Head Start. The contribution from Head Start this year is $1,6,664. That's a $31,000 increase from last year. Of that money, $15,221 is strictly dedicated to training and technical assistance for our staff. So with the monies that are left over, we use that towards salaries, benefits, field trips, any professional development for our staff, local travel, and school supplies as well. So the next several pages kind of detail the application, the exact categories that are ex of us from Head Start, and where we're putting those monies at. If you look at the Head Start summary, I'll give you a few minutes just to kind of glance over it, so you can see exactly how much is going towards personnel, which is salaries, benefits, how much we put towards supplies, the amount of money we dedicated to field trips, and also any travel that we have as well. All right, behind the summary, you'll see our continuation, continuation application narrative. And since Head Start has moved to a five-year grant process, in the years in between, we just have to do an abbreviated grant. And so this outlines our goals and service delivery, and so they just ask us to give any updates if there's anything we want to change for the upcoming school year without having to redo a whole application. So for our goals, one major thing that we wanted to update was in goal number one, we still see a need for getting our families medical and dental care. Head Start requires that everyone has a doctor visit and a dentist visit within the first 45 days of school. And we're in March, and we're still trying to collect some of that paperwork. So we're just going to try and make it a priority to get those forms out to our families earlier in the application process. So as soon as we know they qualify for Head Start, putting those in the mail out and trying to get that to them in the summer, when it's easier for them to get into the doctor and visit a dentist than having to miss school or anything during the school year. Another update we did was on goal number four, which is strengthening data. We do have a new education specialist this year, so our TTNA Amber, she's part of the Training and Technical Assistance Team, has been working with Ms. Curtis to get her trained in the practice-based coaching model, which Head Start requires us to do. And that's just working closely with our teachers who may need a little extra help bumping up their class scores or working on classroom management, things like that. So she's been working closely with her, getting that accomplished for this school year. And then when I came to you guys earlier in November, we talked about goal number seven, we did add that last year, just focusing on the mental health of our staff and their wellness. And so once again, we're working closely with Amber, our TTNA specialist, to kind of develop some goals and some ideas that we can do just to visit our staff, just let them know we're here, and just kind of giving them a little extra break during the day. So we did update that goal as well. As far as service delivery, the only thing that added was in the eligibility section, number five. Last year in March, Head Start added that SNAP benefits would be an automatic qualifier for anyone for Head Start. So we did update our eligibility requirements to reflect that SNAP benefits will now be one of the higher priorities to qualify a student for Head Start. After the narrative of the goals and service delivery, it just breaks down the budget justification. So it just took that summary that you seen, it just kind of explained a little bit more in depth of where that money is going and who it qualifies for. So like the salaries goes toward the program director, the teachers and paraprofessionals, it provides the nurses full salary. We have a family service worker, and then it provides half of my secretary's salary as well. And then it just breaks down the amount that we're going to use for supplies and what kind of supplies we're going to use, and then also the child liability insurance as well. After the narrative, you'll see the COLA and Quality Improvement Supplement. So since this arrived before our Head Start application is due, we're required to submit both of these applications together, so they'll both be submitted by April 1st, that is the deadline. So for the COLA, it's a cost of living adjustment, and so Head Start sends this money out for Head Start programs to help retain their staff in the Head Start centers, giving them salary bumps, things like that. So since our teachers are already part of the school system on the salary scale, we just use it directly to help cover whatever salaries we couldn't cover in our Head Start grant. So we were able to get a total of $87,218 for the COLA and Quality Improvement Supplement, and it's an increase of $55,000 from last year. And so you can look at the summary to see that we're directly putting it into the salary and benefit of one Head Start teacher that we could not cover with the Head Start grant dollars. All right, so I thank you for allowing me to present both of these applications to you. I hope that you had all the information that you needed and that we received your approval for submission of both of these grants.
Any questions from the board?
I have one quick question, I see that your goal number seven is to prioritize the Head Start staff, health and wellness. Will you be able to give us more information on what you're doing in the future as you implement it?
Sure, sure, so we worked, like I said, with our specialists, and we were able to look at the health insurance that the school board provides, and give out to our teachers anything like gyms that are free, any kind of mental health as far as talking to a therapist or things like that, so we sent all of that out. And then we were able to utilize myself, my education specialist, and family service worker, just to visit the classrooms at different times throughout the month, just to give those teachers like an extra 15 minutes to collect themselves, or just a little breather break off the head, or go make a phone call to a parent just to let them know that, hey, we're here, we're taking a spot in your classroom for a few minutes, just to kind of give you a brief. So it worked, it was kind of, you know, a learning challenge for us to figure out how to get that into our schedule as well as theirs. So Amber comes back to us in May, so we're going to bring some, some more ideas that we can maybe implement again next year, that maybe she's talked to some other, you know, districts and stuff and see what they're doing too.
Anything in that regards that we can do to help you all, definitely let us support that fully.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Anyone else? I have a question, how many four-year-olds do we have currently enrolled, total?
Total, we have 433 right now, and that includes our student, four-year-olds that we have at the W. Smith site as well, and third-year-old program that we housed over there, yes.
Okay, and it's a five-year continuing application, and are they coming back anytime soon to audit our program?
We will get a letter, it says, they'll give us a letter probably in August if they are, and then we have 45 days, they'll send another letter out before that. So we have not received any word of it, them coming yet, we're, we're planning that they will visit us next school year, because we kind of feel like it's our time again, yeah.
Next year? Next school year?
Probably in January is when we received one in 2018, so we're planning on that same timeframe, yes.
Okay, great, thank you, Ms. Skilinger. Ms. Lamoyne?
Thank you, Ms. Skilinger, for your efforts in this division, and to all the teachers for all of the work that they're doing in the classroom, and to all the members of the Head Start Policy Council for giving their input and taking their, their time to participate. And I'd just like to make a motion that we send this to the full board.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Lamoyne, do I have a second? Second, by Mrs. Jackson. Mrs. Votche.
And I just want to make mention, this is Ms. Skilinger's first year leading our Head Start program. As many of you know, Dr. Raviota used to be the one up here giving this presentation, and since he retired, you know, Ms. Skilinger has taken over, she was his number-two person for that, and she has done an outstanding job this year in running our Head Start program and meeting with our policy council. And she has had a tremendous amount of experience coming up as a teacher in the program, and then as an administrator, and now the, the director of the program. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of her contributions and the good job that she is doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Votche. We have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Lamoyne, seconded by Ms. Jackson, all in favor, please cast your vote.
Mr. Warner, I think two got here, I'm mistaken. Okay. Motion passes, 11-0.
Thank you, thank you.
Back to you, Mrs. Dyser.
Thank you. I just have the updates.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So we just had the two updates for preschool, so we just finished our winter assessment, so I gave you the narrative from that. The chart in the middle just kind of explains it all, it just lets you know where our students were when they came in in the fall, when we did our assessment in October, and where they are now. Our goal when they leave us is to have 75% meeting or exceeding expectations, so you can see that we're right on track to meet that. With the exception of physical, we're already at 82% of our kids meeting that goal. And with literacy and mathematics being the lowest in the fall, that's what we decided to make our SLTs on, so we're working on that right now, focusing on getting that data met for our students. And then the last item is just a flyer that we sent out to all of the elementary schools, as well as all of the daycares in our Early Childhood Network, letting them know that preschool registration is starting. So it will begin on April 4th, the parents can come pick up the packet from the preschool office and make their appointment, or they can use a little QR code at the bottom of the application, and it takes them right to a school board website where the application is also.
Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next item, personnel changes. Notice we have one retirement, Donna Este from Votche Elementary. We just want to wish Ms. Este's a very happy retirement, and also to say thank you so much for all of your service to the Central Parish School System. Good evening, Ms. Votche.
Good evening, how are you doing?
Good.
Good. Yes, we have very few changes this, this week. And thank you for pointing out, Ms. Dresens, we miss her deeply, quite a loss.
Are there any questions at this time? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item is finance, Ms. Jackson?
Number 4.1, we have an RFP for internal network wiring.
Good evening, board members. The administration is requesting your approval to publish an RFP for purposes of upgrading internal wiring. Before COVID, the district had set out to upgrade all of the internal networking within each one of our school sites. With the onset of COVID, that project was suspended, and we are now picking back up where we left off. With the increase of projects at the school sites that require access to the internet or to the network, we are struggling with being able to get all of that bandwidth through the schools and out. So what we would like to do is, we would like to replace the current fiber runs between the main closet in the schools to each one of the distribution closets throughout the school. And what that will allow us to do is to get a higher bandwidth in and out throughout the school, throughout the school itself. Once that is complete, then all of our schools will then have a network that has been refurbished, remodeled within the last five years.
Questions? Questions? No? Do we have a motion?
Please, a motion, send it forward. One second.
Question.
Yes, Mr. Warner?
So you're sending out an RFP, is this going to be posted on our website for anyone interested to go look at it under bidding?
It will be posted where we post all of our requests for proposals, yes.
Okay, all right. All right, I'm good, thank you.
You're welcome. So we, you have a question, Ms. Dyser? Mr. Brown, do you have any idea approximately what this may cost?
With estimates without, without Shawmet High, a little over 120, without Shawmet High. Shawmet High is a very large campus, as you know, so at this point, we don't have any estimates coming back to us at this point.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Harris?
How much of that, if any, would be eligible for E-Rate reimbursement?
Well, at this point, the project, because we want to speed the project along, we will not be utilizing E-Rate funding for that portion of it, and because that, our E-Rate funding budget is based on a five-year cycle, we use a substantial amount of that to replace switches at the schools. The remaining budget, we're hoping to be able to replace wireless access points until the next five-year cycle, but we don't want to wait for the cycle to start again in order to accomplish this project, as we feel that this project will alleviate some of the issues we are having with struggling, with network struggling, spinning, slowness. You're welcome.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Lamoyne, a second by Ms. Dyser, all in favor, please vote your machine.
Motion passes, 11-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have requests for permission to advertise for bid for the Official Journal, good evening, Mr. Fernandez.
The next few items deal with advertising annual bids for different items for next year. The first one is Official Journal, we're required to appoint an Official Journal to publish school board proceedings and minutes and advertisements, so we'd like to request permission to advertise for bids by the Official Journal for the 2023-2024 fiscal year.
So move.
Second by Mr. Campbell. All in favor? Or please vote your machine, sorry.
Motion passes, 11-0.
All right, next up, we have a request for permission to advertise for bid vehicle painting and body repairs.
Okay, this is the annual bid for, as Ms. Jackson said, painting and body repairs, these are painting and body repairs to our buses and our school board fleet vehicles, via annual bid for 23-24 fiscal year.
Okay, any questions?
I'll move to send it to the full board.
Ms. Long, seconded by Ms. Lee Bowman. There's no further discussion, please vote your machine.
Motion passes, 11-0.
Next up, requests for permission to advertise to bid gasoline, diesel, and other fluids.
Again, this is an annual bid for gasoline and those fluids used to run our vehicles for 2023-2024 fiscal year.
We have a motion by Ms. White, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Warner. There's no further discussion, please vote your machines.
Motion passes, 11-0.
Next up, requests for permission to advertise to bid paper cleaning and custodial supplies.
Okay, this is an annual bid for purchase of these supplies for use in our schools for 2023-2024 fiscal year.
Any questions?
No questions, so move.
We have a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Ms. Lee Bowman, there's no further discussion, please vote your machine.
Motion passes, 11-0.
We have item 5.1, property insurance renewal, we're going to hear from Mr. Fernandez and Mr. Clemmons.
Thank you. Here with us today, we have our friends, Mr. Richie Clements and Mr. Jimmy Clements of Clements Insurance Services, Agents of Record. We're here to present you with the results of the Clements' hard work in hearing quotes for renewal of our property policy. We're expecting an increase this year with all the activity this past year, and we're seeing an increase. In your packets, the first, past the summary page, the first page presents full options that you have that have been given to us, there are options A, B, C, and D. Option A mirrors the coverage that we currently have, which is $30 million of named storm coverage, $150 million of all perilous coverage, same coverage we currently have. The only difference is now the insurance companies are applying a 3% windstorm and hail deduction, just like on named storm deductions, they do a 10% deduction rather than the flat $500,000 deduction you have on other things. Now they're going to apply a 3% to all windstorms, I guess, you call the fanatic activity and non-named storm wind events they can have. And that is option A. events they can have. And that is option A, which is coming in at a premium of four million, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. That's a substantial increase. If you look at the third page, that shows a comparison with the prior two years, you'll see that that hundred and fifty million dollar option is a seventy-one point nine-two percent increase over the previous year. This is substantial increase, but we were expecting that. We've also been presented with three other options. Option B, the same terms, except it removes the top layer of a hundred million of all perils coverage. So that gives us thirty million dollars of name storm coverage and an additional twenty million dollars of all perils coverage. And that is a premium of four million, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. So approximately two hundred thousand dollars less than the previous option. Option C is just thirty million dollars of name, thirty million dollars of coverage, name storm and all perils. And the thirty million dollars is significant is because it's the amount that we're required to have in insurance coverage to meet the FEMA requirements for future participation in the FEMA program. They require us to have at least that much in coverage. So the cost of that with the five hundred thousand dollar deductible and the ten percent and three percent windstorm and name storm deductible deductibles is four million, sixty-seven thousand, five dollars and sixty-eight cents. And the last option, option D, we asked the carriers to give us a quote if we were to raise our deductible from five hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars per location. And that quote came in at a price of three million, nine hundred and four thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-three cents for thirty million dollars of coverage, name storm and other perils. And again, on the third page, you'll see a comparison of the different options. The most substantial increase would be if we contain, if we retain our current coverage. The different options, the premiums range from four point three million to three point nine million. So it's about a four, four hundred thousand dollar difference between the highest and the lowest. And in all cases, there's an increase from the last year. The lowest increase would be if we got the, if we opted for the thirty million dollars with a hundred, with the million dollar deductible, which would be a premium of three point nine, three point nine million, which would be a thirty-one percent increase over last year. So those are the options available to us. None of them are really nice, but it's the way it is with the market right now.
Any questions from board? Ms. Carlin?
So frankly, what is your recommendation, which option?
Well, it's to board's discretion. We have discussed it. My recommendation basically would be for us to go with the fifty million dollar policy, the thirty million dollar name storm, and an additional twenty million dollars of all perils. It's kind of in the middle. It's about a two hundred thousand dollar, it's two hundred thousand dollars less than the high proposal, but it's still a substantial increase over the prior year, one point three million. But I think, I'm sorry, I'm pulling the wrong one, one point six million. But it's, I think it would be the best coverage that we could expect.
So option B is the one-
I'm sorry?
Option B is the one you're referring to?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. And then just one other question for purposes of, does FEMA help with the deductible? So if we went with the higher deductible, is there the potential that we could recoup some of that cost on the back end?
FEMA will pay for your deductible once, and we've already-
Like ever?
-used the deductible.
Forever.
So we'd still have to cover the deductible of the hundred thousand dollars, but they will come in and participate over the thirty million dollars, over the fifty million dollars, the fifty million dollars of losses if we have losses that high, as long as we maintain the thirty million dollars of coverage.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Ms. Harris, Mrs. Harris?
Is there a possibility of getting a quote with the higher deductible with the fifty million, doing the one million dollar?
We attempted that, and Mr. Clemens can speak to that with, I believe, if I'm saying it correctly, I'm wrong. They did run numbers, but with the way they do the pricing, it wouldn't end up with any additional savings. It would, it would be kind of protected, even give us that. But we did, Mr. Clemens did look into that.
Mr. Clemens, why don't you explain the market a little bit and what's happening out there?
Well, anybody that owns a home in here, you probably know what's going on. You know what's going on. You know, investment's still haven't come around yet, and insurance companies play, really plan on having investment income to offset losses. And you know what happened in the last couple of years? Look at your 401Ks and retirement plans, savings accounts. Reinsurance is having a capacity issue, which means it's very difficult to go out there and just buy what you want. You know, it's, and companies are charging a pound of flesh for it. So not having, no supply and demand. It's the usual economics of it. Inflation is really having a terrible impact on the claims, old claims that are still open, and of course, whatever news can be coming up this year and beyond. Loss of material, well, the proliferation of wildfires, making supplies scarce. Once again, prices go up, supply and demand. They're still on their heels from the twenty-twenty-one hurricanes in our area. If you've got a TV, you might have seen in the attorney's ads, that's still looking for business from the time periods from two years ago even. So that still hasn't been settled, and we've just got such a black eye. But I think we had four storms in like eighteen months. Hurricane Ian in Florida was the second most costly catastrophe yet. Fifty to sixty-five billion dollars, they're estimating that. And that'll probably go up. Even though it was way in Florida, it impacts the markets that we go to. You know, we go to primarily New York, Bermuda, and London for prices from companies. So those companies are the ones that participate all over the globe. So consequently, Ian spanked them pretty hard. The prediction of global warming for more frequent and severe storms, which, look at all the winter stuff going on even. And of course, the tornadoes are in our area. That used to be a feather in our cap, and now it's kind of kicking us in the head in right now. So that's the reasons why for it. It's just take it or leave it, companies. They've lost so much money. You know, over the course of twenty years, might be different. The companies don't have that far a memory. They've got three, four, five. And before the first of the year, the big problem was the investors. The investors come in to tell them how much capacity that they'll be able to have at January first. And prior to January first, because we've been working on this obviously for probably the year, months actively, the underwriters say that pens are down, which when they can't even write any business. So when it opened up in January, investor comes in and says, look, I'm tired of losing fifteen percent. I want to make fifteen percent. And if I don't make it here, I'm going to take that money and I'm going to go somewhere else with it, where I have the opportunity to make the money, be it insurance, be it a different part of the country, which, I'm not sure where's the good part of the country to write insurance in right now. But that's the reason. That's the reason. It's terrible. It's all over the place. Other public bodies were hearing the same thing for, ever since, gosh, October probably, that prices adjust up tremendously. We've been anticipating that it was going to be in this neighborhood, and of course, hoping that it wouldn't be. But everything was pointing toward a seven percent area for bad news.
Any more questions?
Mr. Fernandez, how much did, was budgeted for, how much did we budget?
We budgeted based on last year's premium, which was two and a half million plus a slight increase, you know. So we didn't budget this much. We'll have to adjust our budget going forward, but we did budget in the three hundred, three million dollars.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
We did budget in the three million dollar angle.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Mr. Fernandez-
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Fernandez, you recommend option B?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
It's really your decision.
Yeah, I did, yes, sir.
I think that, I think that-
I didn't know if you had said B or D. I'm sorry.
No, it's B. I think that covers us for immediate perils. If there's anything in excess, a loss in excess of fifty million, in excess of that amount, it'll probably be a name storm, which FEMA will come in and participate in. So that's kind of my feeling, but.
Thank you very much. Any more questions?
I got, I got a question from Mr. Clemens. Hey, Mr. Clemens, are you familiar with AMRIS? Are these, these guys in National Fire and Marine Insurance? They're the only ones who, and I'm surprised you got the quotes that you did, to be honest with you. I didn't know if you were even going to be able to come in with anything, to be honest with you.
This is twenty-one different companies participating in this work.
Twenty-one.
So we had to go to that. And in the past, I think the most we'd had was nine. AMRIS has been on ours for a number of years now. They're the leader in our, in South Louisiana area as far as coverage. So they got hit the hardest out of anybody. They're trying to decrease their rights, as a matter of fact. Yeah, National Fire, all of these are A-rated carriers, by best, not developed.
Thank you, Mr. Clemens.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll make a motion that we, you, that we recommend B to the full board with a recommendation.
I'll second.
All in favor, cast a vote.
Motion passes, eleven to zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, next item, superintendent's notes. Ms. Vouchet? Okay, just, you know, a few announcements. We had the Special Olympics last Friday, and for most of you were able to make it. It was just a really, really beautiful day. It was a special day, and like we talked about, our, you know, theme this year of gratitude, there were so many people there, and community representatives, and businesses, and volunteers. And if you just looked at the faces of the kids, it was a really special, special day. And I think the addition of the little petting zoo was really, really nice. So many of the kids enjoyed that, especially, you know, our younger ones. So just wanted to thank all the people who were able to be with us and made contributions to that day, and it just brought many, many members of the community together. The kids, you know, at the high school, who were the buddies of all the Special Olympians, I mean, they just rave about it. And I think I had a conversation with one of them who had come back and said that was one of the highlights of her high school experience in being a buddy at the Special Olympics. So it really impacts many, many kids' lives. The Shawman High School Play, as we had talked about before, which is Anything Goes, is this Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So please, if you would love an enjoyable evening, I mean, those tickets are on sale. It's at seven o'clock Thursday night, Friday night, and Saturday night, and then a two o'clock matinee on Sunday. And I think you'd be really pleased, you know, to see the, the results of that. Our academic games team, they had just completed the four local tournaments, and the team has been in place, and they're practicing to go to nationals, and they'll be with us at our next board meeting, they and their parents. So that will be a very nice night. So, and yeah, Ms. Jackson's daughter will be one of our team members. She qualified. So it's, that will be a very nice event at our next board meeting. And then the, our staffing for next year is currently taking place internally. Ms. Pritchard and I have been meeting with all of our principals and school administrators in terms of our needs for staffing for next school year. We will by tomorrow afternoon be internally posting any vacancies or any openings for transfers for our current employees, current teachers, and then anything that is still open, we will be posting and have our job fair in May at that time. So anyone out there who is interested, you can just contact the Personnel Department, and for our job fair, that will be there in May. And these will be teaching positions for that May job fair. Any questions of the superintendent?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Vouchet. Is there a motion to adjourn? Most by Mr. Campbell. Is there a second? I'll second. Second by Ms. Harris. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to adjourn, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? You had something? Motion carries. Good night. The meeting is now adjourned.